Alright folks, please join me for the pledge to lead this.
Our pledge to lead this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fellas, I guess it's an all male group in the audience. This is the December fourteenth meeting of the and only meeting in December of the Town of Canadega Planning Board. I will start out by introducing those of us at the table. My far, far right is John Rovitella. He's our recording secretary, running the controls tonight of the virtual connection is Kim Burkett. We then have Amanda Van Laken, board member. We have Bob La Course, board member, Brian Staychuk, board member. I'm Chuck Euler, I'm the chairman of the board. To my left is Shawna Buncher, our town planner. And next to Shawna is Lance Brayband from MRB Group. And Chris Nadler is our planning board and town board attorney. Most of the folks here have been through the procedure, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time describing how you participate in the meetings. We do ask when you're called upon to come to the podium and address the board. And since there's no one in virtual land, I don't have to. We do. Well, welcome. Okay, well, when I call upon public participation for a particular application, if you can get our attention, if you'd like to speak, we will hear you at that time. But other than that, the board and the applicants will do most of the talking. So only during the public participation would would you be requested or provided time to speak? Want to make sure everyone knows where the emergency exits are in case there should be any type of emergency that we have to leave the the room. There were a couple of public hearings being held tonight. They were all duly advertised in the Daily Messenger in the December seventh edition of the Messenger. And I will now go to the privilege of the floor. Anyone in the group that would like to address the board regarding an issue that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. If not, I will take privilege of the floor myself and yield to Shawna who would like to make an introduction.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have two guests in the audience. We have Scott Neal and two Town of Canadega residents, I should add, Scott Neal and Mark Tolbert. Both gentlemen are interested in planning board vacancies. We met, Chuck and I met with them about probably three weeks ago now.
At least.
Yep, and spoke with them each at length. And we thought that, given their their interest and their careers and their achievements and and the conversation that we had with them, we wanted to invite them to the board, introduce them to you, have them talk to you a little bit, give them and give you an introduction and and, you know, go from there if you, we can talk in executive session about making any sort of recommendation to the town board. We also invited the town board, Jared's on tonight. So I wanted to invite invite Scott up. Do you want to come to the podium and just tell us a little bit about yourself? And and the board has, you can ask questions as well.
Okay, my name is Scott Neal. I live in Canadega a little over a year now. Just calling to look for the town and the whole surrounding area. I work in Rochester, so I will commute every day, but it's nice to come home to Canadega. We used to live in Pennfield and prior to that, Sodas Point. In Sodas Point, I was on planning board for about five years. Went through all the training for a year. I actually was clerk of the planning board and I was voting number. Small town, many hats. I loved it. I love the community service. I talked to Sean and Chuck about this too, that you feel like you're helping people, you're resolving an issue because they come to the board and, you know, they've got one way that they want to do things and unfortunately, it's not always by the book, by the coach. You kind of have to work together. And I miss the whole community service and involvement in my community. So it's why I'm here in a nutshell. I am a CEO at a small credit union in Rochester. My my day job has been there about eighteen years. Again, it's another community where a nonprofit, you know, credit unions are a little different to banks. So we try to work with our members and find solutions for them as well.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Scott? Jared, do you have any question for Scott?
Jared, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. Listen, I'm not at practice, not Zoom teaching anymore, so I couldn't find the, I couldn't find the button. No, I just wanted to listen what to what candidates have to say and listen to what questions that you guys were asking the candidates. And just to be able to put a name to the face of those who have applied.
I think Scott is unique in that he's one of the few people I've interviewed that knew Seeker. Coming in knowing Seeker, I mean, that is an accomplishment.
So it was at Sodas Point during the big flood, two years actually. So we get a lot of seeker, a lot of.
Sure. Can I ask what, where you live in the town?
I live off the county road thirty. It's a little, it's a private lane, it's called Butternut Lane. Currently renting. The goal is to find something. Sorry, I got my footing Canada and I really do like it. Plan is to find something permanent.
Can I ask, like, what does it mean when you hear rural character?
Rural character? Well, I grew up in in the town of Sodas, okay? And then Sodas Bay. So rural character to me is just, you know, and you're a lot like, we're a lot like Sodas Point. You know, we very small knit, you know, nine hundred people year round, or I should say in the winter, and then nine thousand people in the summer. So I'm used to rural living and inviting people into the community that might have different ideas and want to do things a little differently coming from a larger city. Rural is is communities, is working together.
Cool. Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
All right.
Thanks for coming out. Good evening. You've been at that podium before.
It's it's still the same.
Just like a go up, right? Go ahead, Mark.
Good to see everybody. I'm Mark Tolbert. I live in Atticiana Point. I am a lifelong Ontario County resident and I've been living in the town of Canadega since two thousand fourteen. Lived down on Atticiana Point with my my boys and my partners, so eleven and a fifteen year olds. For me, it's it's about time to give back to community. I've been at this podium being maybe a little bit of a pain in the neck in some cases, maybe more informational in some other cases. But driving initiatives that were important to me and at the same time trying to balance what I think are the needs of the community as well. So in my background, I was on the other side of the table in fire department for a number of years looking at site plan review for safety applications and making sure that those designs fit within the needs of the community at the time and the resources that we could apply to it. So I did that through two thousand eleven. Also sat on access Ontario County Board, where I was both a board member and a chair at that board and driving the fiber network in Ontario County. So I've been out of the community service piece for about six years now and have been looking for a way to come back into it and do something that's useful. So I'm looking at the ability to come in and actually participate in community. I don't believe in having too many opinions without trying to participate, which is something that's important to me. From a standpoint of applicants and things that come in, I am a landowners rights type of person. So I think that when you acquire a piece of property, you're entitled to do with it what the zoning allows you to at that time. And you should also check what's happening around you, so I don't think that there should generally be surprises. And then there's a process that goes with it after that. I tend to be a pragmatic person. I'm a physicist by training and engineer at heart, so I'll analyze that. Now, I will treat most things as I would a small business. So that's just how I mentally work through process and try to look at it from all the different levels and the different sides that come in, trying to understand that there's a different viewpoint from everybody in the group. So interested in participating in the planning board because it's something that the engineering me looks at it and says, and I've said this a number of times, that here the engineers believe we can solve everything, if it's not a problem, we can't solve. Except for the people part of it, and that's the interesting part of the experiment with the variables. So definitely interested in looking at ways to continue to grow and help community and participate in the town.
Questions, board? You do spend some time in the air.
I do. I'm a pilot as well. So actually, just last week, acquired Steve LaCrosse's airplane. So I'll be getting that back to flying and hopefully, hopefully doing a little bit of travel there too.
What does rural character mean to you?
I think he did a really good job of explaining it. It's as much about community as it is as it is feeling. And I've experienced all levels of it from very small rural communities, like he talks about with hundreds of people. But it is about sense of feeling when you're there, I think, and what that means. So you're you're also, there's a structure that goes to rural community, zoning and distances and planning and everything that goes into it. But it's also a feeling of that sense of community that comes together and what comes away from it and what that community emanates. And that's the hard balance of figuring out what that means. And you're seeing that with a number of the movements towards the Ridgeline activity that's happening and the scenic view and the different interpret. I mean, you've been a great advocate of talking about what a scenic view is, because that's a hard one. But it is that sense and feeling that comes in that the community then gives you feedback on, is what I think it really comes down to, Ryan, is. And then figuring out how to get the parameters from that engineering perspective that they want is what the community wants to see in that area.
Thanks. Town board member, Mr. Simpson, do you have any questions of Mr. Tolbert?
No, I do not at this time.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything else? Well, again, fellas, thanks for coming out. I really appreciate it. We hope to have a full board at our January meeting. So that is January eleventh, I believe. So stay in touch, we'll stay in touch and let you know. Okay, moving on. Guess we're ready to go back to the agenda regarding new public hearings. The first one being Lamar Advertising, representing Canadega National Bank, owner of the property at twenty-two forty-one State Route three thirty-two. They're requesting both a special use permit and a single stage site plan approval for a commercial electronic message board. And I will now open the hearing and ask someone from the applicant to address.
Yeah, so we are for the first two public hearings.
And you are, sir?
I'm sorry. My name is Mike Green. I'm from Lamar Advertising.
He didn't think he, he's been standing at a podium enough.
So much.
For the town board, he did, he felt like.
Yes, sorry. Been in front of all the other boards, I think. So I'm Mike Green. I'm from Lamar Advertising. Jim Newton, he's also from Lamar Advertising. We're here to get today, I'll be brief for you guys, for some special use permits and site plan approvals for a project that, as Chris kind of alluded to, been working out in town, Canadega, for a certain time. So generally, the agreement that we have in place with the town will reduce the amount of signs in the town by fifty percent. The exist, there's an existing sign on Route twenty-one, which is just south of Hannah Road, will be removed completely. We've also agreed to have two conversions of existing signs, which are now static, into digital signs. The first location, Route five and twenty, we're going to remove one of the signs and convert the other sign to a digital sign. The second location, Route three thirty-two, which is the one they're looking at here. So that sign is just a regular stack sign now. This will become a monument sign. As you can see, there's a ton of Canadega logo on it as well. Now, in doing this, like I said kind of before, we're going to be reducing the current sign inventory by fifty percent. And all the digital signs, New York State DOT calls them the commercial electronic variable message board signs, CEVMS. That's their term. Another name says just a digital sign. So we do comply with all DOT standards and we did receive preliminary approval from DOT. So thanks for your time and happy to go into more detail or answer any other questions you guys have for us.
If I could give a little background.
Chris, yeah, if you would.
Ten, twelve, thirteen years ago, the town of Canadega passed a local law changing the town code of the town of Canadega to eliminate billboards in ten years. Ten years later, the zoning office sent out letters to all billboard owners saying, according to our code, you've got to remove these billboards. Lamar then very politely, by filing a federal lawsuit, informed the town that there's other laws that we didn't know about that prohibit the town from forcing the removal of these signs without paying a lot of money. It was a very classy, very nice federal lawsuit. But then proceeded to work very hand in hand with the town to get the, to settle the lawsuit in a way that really benefits the town. Lamar was able to show the town board that the signs aren't what most people think when they think of digital billboards. There's no neon, there's no moving parts. It's one sign that every eight seconds.
Yep.
That's changes to another sign.
Instantaneous.
And eight seconds being the time that it's not going to distract the driver by being a moving, you know, the the change isn't going to be distracting. They did a great presentation for the town board showing that really actually, you know, riding along in the car as the signs changed. Their attorney reached out to me yesterday saying, should they be prepared to do a presentation? And I thought her agenda was a lot more, I said, no, keep it short or else the board's gonna, you know, hang you up to dry. It's a nice presentation. I'm sure they'll send it to you if you're if you're interested. The long and the short of it though is, you know, Lamar was willing to give a lot. I'm going to ask these fellows to summarize what what Lamar brought to the table to benefit the town and its residents. I think it's an interesting deal that Lamar and our town manager put together and that the town board approved. And the lawsuit is over or about to be over and behind us. Can you just, before they ask you questions?
I mean, I'll say just to start off, which I know I've said before, but the one of the the big things is reducing the amount of billboards to the town by fifty percent just right off the bat. Then if you want to go into more detail, Jim, about kind of the the deal we got in place with Doug, town manager, for some advertising for Canadega.
Yeah, and the and the digital billboards on each one, the one on three thirty-two and five twenty, Lamar's providing what we call the digital slot for the town. And I think it's for a six month period on each board that can be used for, you know, not commercial use for the town. And it was used for maybe a festival or something of that nature, mostly like a public service messaging or emergency messaging as well. And that's kind of the the deal.
Yeah.
And you also said if you haven't sold all the slots.
Oh, yeah.
The dog because, hey, you want us to throw something up here?
Yeah, it's super, super easy for us. If you guys have like pre-approved creative, whether it just be a welcome to Canadega or maybe an image of the lake or just maybe something different for every season, it just, if we don't have anything sold, we can say, hey, Doug, we got, you know, the next forty-eight hours. We just, you know, one email, then flip it up there for the next forty-eight hours, just instead of there being nothing on it. So we do that for you guys as well. And they also get used for like, like there's crazy snowstorms, like emergency messaging alerts. We have a partnership with the FBI, they take they take it over if there's any dangerous or suspicious activity that they'll just automatically go on there, just bypasses us.
Amber.
Amber alerts, all that stuff, so.
It's really, during the key way you do, you create what we call a media library, which means we have pre-approved messaging. And you just call us up and say, you're going to have this message on. And we can literally have it up probably within ten minutes.
Yeah.
If it's approved. It's cool. It's really, it's really easy.
Yeah, we do have a default mechanism if if it was the the malfunction that just automatically kills the power. So it will just be black, so it's not going to be glitching on an image or I think.
As part of the settlement agreement, one of the steps to get to a settlement agreement was we worked together to develop a code that would allow these billboards, but not really any others with certain parameters that met traffic safety standards and and the like. My understanding is that the proposed signs meet the requirements of our new town code related to these and were presented, and the proposed signs tonight were presented to the town board and are attached to the settlement agreement as part of the process. And also as part of the process, because our code requires it, planning board approval, sign, site plan approval is required.
If we wrote kind of part of the new local law, we wrote it in such a way where you would need these pre-existing non-performing signs to convert. And we were, there's only two of them now being able to be converted. So not, it can't be, businesses can't say, hey, we want to make our signs digital now because they're not, they don't have pre-existing non-performing advertising space. So they're, they won't be allowed to do that, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Board members, questions?
I have a question. How was for you guys? Because the, we're supposed to see a sketch plan. But I never saw a site plan or a sketch.
Well, the site plan is required with a special use permit, so that that's where that language kind of is interchangeable.
But a sketch plan is not required. It's, I think it's encouraged. I had the site plan, it's not big enough.
Yeah, they did submit these.
Yeah, you got them.
Oh, where's the location?
That's three thirty-two. Well, yeah, I questioned that too, and because a site plan approval is always hand in glove with a special use permit.
Right.
So. I guess what he's looking at.
The site plan.
But to be clear, the site, the site plan component also has to be a concept level plan for especially for, unless it needs to be elevated for certain requirements. For example, like solar projects, they require a site plan approval, but they need an actual professional land, you know, licensed, you know, site plan to be provided. Somebody who's doing a home occupation out of their house with a special use permit requires a site plan, but it's a concept plan showing their existing driver location and where the signs might or might not be located on the property. I'm just trying to give you the example between the two.
Yeah, hair salon or something like that.
We have blueprints too. Oh, no, there's already power out there. Yeah. There's actually like one of the, I don't know the correct term, but it's a big transformer out there that we get.
And she, I can't, I need to wear my glasses. I can't see.
Existing billboards are currently at.
Yeah. Did you do a review of this, Lance?
No, the site, the site plan applications, first special use permit were referred to MRB Group.
I think one of the reasons you probably didn't see it is because it wasn't labeled as a site plan.
Major, I guess the major is just for me related to that, Bob, would be like people pulling in and out of 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 the area. Like, how are these maintained? Like, how often are people visiting the site? Because on three thirty-two, it's kind of off. Yeah, there is an access road behind there for for maintenance. But these are being digital, they're not going to require people to physically be outside. Once, once they're erected.
Yeah.
It's just all handled through, just. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not even how they do it, right? It's so fervent, it's like.
Somebody's watch.
Okay. Board, any other questions? I had a couple. So again, it complies with the agreement between the town.
Yes, sir.
And Lamar, this this application.
Yeah, we actually took the settlement agreement and the conditions in the settlement agreement are part of the approval resolution.
Right, you have the subtle agreement, conditions were referenced in the zoning law determination, which were then pulled over for your draft resolutions for your consideration tonight.
Yeah.
Mike, I know at the PRC meeting, we talked about, do you have an easement on CMB's property?
So not CMB, we don't, we have at least an agreement.
Okay, so that gives you the right to go.
Yep.
Erected and service.
Yep.
Okay, because it didn't show in the plan.
No, we have an easement at the five twenty location.
I know you, well, there, yeah.
No, for CMB, no, we just, we have a, we have an agreement with them.
Okay. On this particular, on the three thirty-two, you had two renderings of the sign. One showed in terms of landscaping, a call it southwest look. Looked like low, low brush, it low shrubs. The other one had upright arborvitus.
Yeah, I submitted the.
So which.
The one, the one with the arborvitus is the one that.
That's the one you want.
Yeah, but that was, the one on the rendering was. The architects, they were in there, they're the architects from Arizona, so that's why it looks like.
That's exactly what I thought. It looks like, yeah, you're going to have the Roadrunner runner. That's the one I.
Yeah, this is, yeah, he's, yeah, that's from RMG's from Phoenix.
We'll pass that around.
Okay, well, make sure the record reflects that. And that land sleeping will be provided.
That is, that that was on the documents.
It's the sign, okay.
Yeah, it's up there.
That arborvitus is going to be eaten halfway up by the deer within five months.
Maybe there'll be enough hum to the sign that scare.
I'm kind of joking, but I'm dead serious, like, I think those aren't going to live there.
Mike, how many rotation, how many adds do you have per load?
So there's six, six, only a maximum of six. There can be fewer, it's, well, twenty-five are sold and we got one available, we say, hey, Canadega, let's throw you up there. So there essentially only be six.
So there'd be six eight second cycles.
Yes.
So every forty-eight seconds, it'll.
Yep.
Go back to the original, our first aid.
Yep.
Maximum height is twenty-two feet, which is what you're showing.
Yep. Twenty-two feet on Route three thirty-two.
Square.
Twenty-five feet on the Route five and twenty.
Right, that's what the agreement provided for. So, Chris, this is a special use permit.
That's correct.
So essentially, it goes with the use, goes with the land, so I guess it becomes a perpetual. It'll be a perpetual use. So if Lamar would happen to exit and leave it, it could be a new sign purveyor, could be, could use the structure?
That's correct, except I'm drafting a condition right now to the, to the effect of, for the special permit, the permit shall be null and void if the sign does not comply with the terms of the settlement agreement in terms of, you know, usage. Usage for the towns.
So the settlement agreement was not exclusive to Lamar?
I think we addressed it in the settlement agreement, to be honest.
Okay.
I didn't just, I didn't, it's been a couple of months since I read the settlement agreement.
It doesn't say that.
And I'm pretty sure it says, and this will run, you know, the the benefits to the town will be perpetual no matter who owns the sign.
Yeah.
I think it did too, but I just don't remember that enough to not.
And it doesn't, yeah, I remember the exact wording we used, but.
Yeah, but I mean, this permit shall be null and void if, you know, the sign is not operated in compliance with the terms of the settlement agreement, I think is, will cover that.
So again, addressing just, you have another question?
I just got one for Mr. Never. So in in like the spirit of that law from thirteen years ago from the town board at the time, do you feel like the town has met, like, trying to honor the spirit of that board from thirteen years ago? Like, they made a law that was obviously not legal, maybe, or whatever that was thirteen years ago. But it seems like, I appreciate that Lamar came and, you know, we met with Doug. We, we met the spirit of what the town board was trying to do there. As as to the best extent possible, the town got a lot out of this.
As as to the best extent possible, the town got a lot out of this.
Yeah, these are, you know, this is a, this is not your traditional billboard. You know, made out of steel frame. This is a pretty fancy thing that's gonna be a part of the gateway, the uptown gateway. Um, you know, the the local law from thirteen years ago was uh done in accordance with what every municipality considers as the law. You know, you have to amortize the you, the the value over yes, you have to give people ten years, approximately ten years notice before you say tear that down. It's no longer in conformity. As as for signs. With buildings, you know, you could say no expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. Um but with sign, pre-existing non-conforming signs, they get time to ti- time to recoup their value uh before they have to tear it down unless it turns out it's on a highway that receives a federal funds.
Highway beautification act of nineteen fifty-nine.
For you, buddy. Not that
Throw the dates out there.
Not that people in the sign business really is that important.
That's a mantra.
So, you know, this this wasn't in an option to tear these down.
Yeah.
Uh the town's insurance carrier provided us with defense counsel. I rendered that opinion to the town board. Uh as did our the town's insurance council, insurance defense council. Uh Lamar's attorney, uh may rest in peace. Uh someone I I well respected, he explained the laws to me. And uh you know, I I understand that that's the law. We don't have the option to tear these down. And so this is the best alternative.
Do we need a decommissioning plan?
Of these signs? Is it required in the special use?
Special use permit doesn't require it, no.
No, I don't think so. I don't think there's. I mean, if if we need to decommission this, the town can bulldoze it and put it in a couple of dump trucks in twenty-five years or something.
So I guess if if these signs are out of vogue and they're not, there's there's a better, you know, type of sign. Well, there is that these signs are out of vogue. You want to tear it down and leave the sale. I guess you just go out, take your
I mean, I
Take your structure.
I don't foresee that ever happening, but if it ever did, we would, yeah, take take the structure down. We usually cut it, cook it below ground, fill up the dirt, plant some grass, but I don't foresee that ever happening.
Yeah. Are you okay if we make that a condition? Then if you do, you would tear it down?
If we abandon them?
Yes.
If if it's abandoned.
But because it's a state road, the state would make us.
Yeah, the state would govern that.
Yeah, the state governs.
You would?
Yeah.
Leave that to the state. I don't want to get
Okay, yeah, all right.
In the town being required to tear it down.
Good question. Good question.
You know what I mean? I'm just trying to think. You brought up solar panels. I'm thinking.
Yeah, solar panels useful life wears out after twenty years. Signs useful life doesn't. Or or it may, but it's
Should be upgraded.
Worth it to upgrade it for that from Lamar.
Those things used to be painted, so if there's something bigger and better. Holograms. Actually.
Yeah.
Okay, uh let me go out to the public. Anyone in the public? Want to address the board regarding this application? If not, uh let me look at a couple of third parties here. The county planning board looked at it. They were just concerned it would comply with the nine dot the C E V M S regulations.
That is part of the settlement agreement that we.
Right. And you you did contact nine dot. And Greg deferred you to the real estate person?
Yeah, so I got the email from Greg and he deferred me to Angela Rogers, who's the real estate specialist. I spoke to her and I did four email with you guys. She took a look at the signs and said they would both be good. She gave me preliminary approval for uh C E V M S. They met all the criteria. They'd be okay there.
And you have that, Lance, as a condition, I think.
I had the D O T permit. The D O T permit is the condition of both.
So to get the D O T permit, we need a original document, which is called a local municipal certification. So if it's worth to get approved, we just need that signed off. That's what we need to apply to D O T.
Yep. Chicken, not the egg.
Yes.
Okay.
Quite depressed, I think.
Sure. Uh anybody else on the board?
I just wanted to say we do have a new sign scheme at what the town that's been approved. So we just want to make sure when we that bottom town candidate goes in.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, we're gonna need a higher rendered, we're gonna need a.
Yeah, so I'll work with you on that.
Okay. Yeah, that's up to you guys.
Okay, we're taking these one at a time. So this is the three thirty-two sign. Um it is a unlisted. Oh, excuse me, let me close the hearing. And then we'll move on to our deliberations. Uh so it is an unlisted.
No, type two.
Oh, is it type two?
Existing sign. Type two.
Out of my notes on this, okay. That's even better. Well, that case, I will take a bundled motion for both the, excuse me, we got three here. Uh, all right, let's do the well, we have this, we have a special use still. So uh I will make a motion that uh we consider this as a type-two seeker uh review and therefore there's no further action this board has to take regarding seeker. I have a second. Okay, I I moved, Bob seconded in discussion, all in favor? Okay, you want to do site plan before special use, right?
No, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
So I used to say.
So I get confused. Uh all right, I will entertain a motion for the site plan approval. Subject to, and I'll make that motion, uh subject to uh five conditions with some subconditions under number five.
Um.
Nope.
And Chris, is this where you have a
No, that's gonna be in the special.
Special use, okay. So regarding the site plan, I will make that motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Hey, by me, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, I'll ask someone else to do the special use and we'll include a further condition from Chris.
Uh this special part number eight, this special permit shall be null and void if the benefits to the towns at fourth and then number one twenty twenty-one settlement agreements are not provided.
Okay. Okay. A second? Uh, okay, so this is a special use. I will go with the land unless it is abandoned for more than a year. So uh it's subject to all the
Yes.
Conditions and requirements of special use part. Okay. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Hi.
I Okay, fellas.
Thank you.
Did you do both?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Sir Chairman, let the record reflect it is six thirty-eight P M. And I, Ryan Tinkin, Chuck will be leaving this meeting to attend my son's orchestra concert. And I will be back as soon as I possibly can. Those are pretty quick, right? Let's all hope. Actually, I do love these very, very much.
John, don't put the
And that's the fun here, here.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we get, we get the other application. I just realized that. Let's
I thought we were bundling.
No, I bundled the So fellas, before you go away, uh we didn't really talk about twenty-one. Excuse me, five and twenty.
So they just granted approval of the three thirty-two one. There's some confusion whether or not we bundle.
And then the lawyer said, hey, did you do both? And everyone said, oh, yeah, don't worry about it.
Oh, both, both. Special use and site plan.
See, I thought you meant both applications too.
Oh.
All right.
My bad. This is for Lamar Advertising, representing T L C property, owner of property forty-four, oh-six State Route five and twenty. Uh requesting special use permit and single-stage site plan approval for a commercial attorney message sign. I will now open the hearing. Uh anything unique and different about this application from the other, other than it is on it is not on a fancy pedestal, it's on a steel pole, right?
Yeah, no, same. Pretty much. Everything kind of talked about. I thought we were talking about both of them, so. No, they're all same. So there's not, this one's not going to be a money sign, that's the only reason.
And the property owner. You are T L C, right?
They own it.
Lamar's subsidy of T L C.
Yeah, that's their property.
So it's on your property?
Yes.
So you don't need an easement. Across the any more than planning. Okay. We squared away on that. You you covered Chris's request about having emergency contact on both applications. Okay.
Basically, the the suggested conditions that were offered to the board for both were the same across the board.
Chris Jensen just wanted to have an emergency contact.
Oh, okay.
That the town can uh call middle of night.
Yeah, it said basically that the applicant is to provide an emergency contact number to the co-enforcement officer for any issues that may occur with the display or if the context should change.
Okay.
No, we'll get it when you do the.
Okay. It's okay, everybody, excuse me. Yeah, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna do. If nobody else has anything to add. Anyone in the public like to speak on this application? This is a sign uh in front of big lots. Bless you. If not, uh I will close the hearings. And uh since we've done this once before, let's, I don't mind bundling the type the type two, the special use and the site plan uh under one motion.
I'll make that motion. Type two resolution, site plan approval and special use.
Correct. Thank you.
Same condition. All right, I have a motion, a second. There are three of us. We still have a majority here. So all in favor? I posed the one, I hope. Okay, now we're done.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Yes, yes.
Have a good holiday.
You as well. Have a speedy rest of the night and.
Thank you.
All righty. Our next hearing.
It is.
All right.
These guys can go fast.
Next hearing is Marathon Engineering, representing S and J Morel and Sidney Wilkin. At all owners of property at yet determined address State Route twenty-one. Uh requesting final section one subdivision approval for a subdivision totally ninety-five acres. And Rich.
I'm here. Rich P. from Marathon Engineering. Jeff Morel passed along his apologies. Headed to other towns, not in the area. Was hoping to be able to phone in and is in some limited coverage area, but I do have fellow Reno from their office with me today. So section one. Really, all that we've really done on this is we've advanced this to our final engineering level. Uh we did reduce section one to twenty-nine lots. I think we have thirty-four in the preliminary overall. That was to meet with the fire code access regulations. Uh we will be building first stormwater management facility for that. We have incorporated the additional details with parking areas. The uh one down by Route twenty-one is paved now. And we are showing uh pedestrian crossing across Route twenty-one there to Miller Park. Our trails, there were a lot of discussions before, and I'll have Bill step up in a minute to to discuss a few points. Uh we're still proposing the grass trails through the meadows, through the environmental areas. Very much the same as what is in Miller Park right now and many other parks around the town. Uh we will be putting in a hammerhead turnaround just prior to the creek crossings. The creek crossing will come in in the future sections. Um there were some discussions during preliminary overall about a a separate application with the the candidate will lake water commission. They have done their work on some adjustments to the stream for water quality, and I do believe all the trees were planted too uh back in October.
Yes, they were.
Um so at this, I'll have Bill step up, discuss a few points that uh Jeff wanted us to to talk about regarding the trails. And then after that, we'll open it up. Any questions? Here's Bill. Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Bill Reno. I'm with Morel Builders. And again, I pass along Jeff's uh actually another military at England. And I checked with him today and he had two virus. And uh no way he was gonna be able to.
They call pubs.
Well.
That's a good ones. He'll be back next month.
So he passed two words, okay.
So about a foot shorter uh than Jeff, but I play his role tonight. So um basically, obviously, we've gone back and forth on the trails. And I just wanted to point out um six points that either Jeff has covered or discussed previously. One of the points in regards to the trails, anything more than what we're proposing, some type of hard surface is a challenge uh to actually maintain and hold up and because of burden uh in the future, especially from the cost standpoint, the repair standpoint. They're fixed in position typically, so making any movement on the these concrete sidewalks can be detrimental. I uh put a patio on this summer and never actually sat on it once. And I had a tree go down Monday as the bills were losing uh and land just on the corner of the patio and snapped the corner. So I know what uh we're talking about when it comes to repair bills. The fixed position to being able to make adjustments depending on terrain. You know, adjusting could be done, obviously, if we have just mowing uh these open areas like Miller. Trail length is extensive. It's over two miles with Miller Park. It's seventy-nine hundred linear feet. So it is going to excellent. I think it covers the sort of trail, trail covers multiple environmental areas. That why, that's why they uh would like to keep it as just a grass. And a paid trail is not conducive to a natural experience. And it also completely eliminates snowshoe and also cross-country skiing. And then we felt that paved does introduce a significant liability due to snow and ice. We do see um that the town, this board, um in the future might want to implement areas where paved would be appropriate. And um when we're done with the neighborhood, Jeff made a point that you know, the rec fees that we will be paying will be over ninety thousand dollars to the town. So that they have that ability to use those funds. That's all the points that we wanted to make.
Okay, anything else?
There was one last item, I think, on the board, and that was working through the the wording of the language for the conservation easement to public access. I know Jeff has been working very closely with Chris and Doug to get that done. That obviously has to go through some of the H O A filing with the state attorney's office. Takes some time. So, you know, we're looking to to consider a conditional approval on that coming down the road.
That's that's my recommendation. Uh like Rich says, I've talked to Jeff extensively about this. First of all, making it conditional on my approval means that they don't get to build until they make, they make it the way I want it. Um that's as a general proposition, but I've also actually done this thing with this developer and this developer's attorney. And we've never had a problem. They produce, they generally have produced exactly almost exactly what I've wanted. I generally had minor changes that uh have been turned around within a matter of hours. Um so I'm I'm very confident that we'll be able to get exactly what we need, provided that this board gives me direction during this meeting, so I can uh enact what this board wants.
So I think that we can open up to the board for any questions on this application.
Anyone from the three of us?
I could start a thought. Um, I've got a couple of things, but I'm sure you two are gonna grab some of those as well. So is there any recent renderings of the buildings proposed? I know that we've talked about this part sometime now and I think I saw something way back when through the sketch plans, but.
We have the identical product going up right now in Lakewood Meadows. The only difference in Lakewood Meadows, we just in the last section, section eight, have come out with this two-unit building. So I think we have four of them in section one and the balance of them are three-unit buildings. We've eliminated the four-unit build, so we are not going to do the four-unit town home unit at all. So in the first section, we'll have twenty-two end unit buildings, which are extremely popular.
Is that just to eliminate, just to eliminate middle units?
It is. We find that the market is driven to the duplex. Our neighborhood in Pittsburgh, Alpine Ridge, is actually forty-eight duplexes. But here, we still have got the center unit because there's a price point that the consumer is sensitive to and that center unit allows us to get to that price point, but essentially, it's gonna have some, maybe some architectural changes, but the base plan, we just met with James Fady. The base plan is essentially gonna stay the same.
And I believe Jeff provided some of those in the.
With the preliminary, there, yeah, so it hasn't changed from what they've shown.
Correct. Well, you know, generally architectural review is not the purview of this board, but because of the sensitive rural area and because this board still has a say, you know, the developer maybe may be willing not to object if you make a condition that prior to signatures on the plans, you know, the board has a chance to review and approve. You know, renderings.
They were only in the cemetery hall.
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, well, then let's do that as a condition with the understanding, and I want to be very clear for this and for future projects, you guys don't have, you can't, you're not designers, you're not architects and you can't, you know, you can approve, you can evaluate the renderings for general architectural style to make sure they fit in, but you can't say, well, you know, why don't you put a gable here and this window needs to be moved over to the left. But, yeah, we can do that as a condition.
And also just to expand on that a little bit, the requested lot standards we have has an maximum building height of thirty feet, which forces you to that one story.
And the second thing is more of just to say out loud for the record and it's in response to the recent other newer developments that we have seen and we've seen people whose houses were built at the incorrect elevation levels. Just to state for the record, you know, with this huge development that according to our code, John and Alina knew for the exact ins and outs of it, but if the homes are built, I think it's three feet above what's listed on the plan, then the rest will be also.
Can't very, one foot.
It can't go higher than a foot and.
One foot.
Oh, yeah.
One foot.
Absolutely.
Can't change.
One.
And I'll tell you, you know, when.
That's, yeah, it's not three.
In a development like this, the town would have no choice but to just say, Jeff, you gotta go out there and tear this down and rebuild it. Sometimes, you know, when it's a single-family home that's, that, you know, a developer that's gonna be selling, you know, ninety of these.
Right.
No choice, they come down.
Just, just to add that we were in front of the board for some units out at Lakewood Meadows that were not a lot, way less than a foot higher than that one foot that they were above it. We came in and got those taken care of and through that process, our builders has realized some, some things that happened during some of the field process while they were building, that they had worked to correct that and eliminate that. So we don't expect that to be an issue.
And I think the town.
Yeah, the town has a new policy as well where we're getting as-built information, typically we get it at the end, which is part of the closing out process, but now the codes department is requiring it as part of their foundation pouring process, so they're getting it ahead of that, of that. So it seems to be working much better.
But it's a very legitimate concern.
That is a good point.
And then my third question.
That's Mr. Pidge.
And just, you can answer this or not answer this, have you sold any of your units yet? Is there a lot of interest that the boards are out there?
Sign. So we cannot sell anything because this is a, we need a state attorney, a general approval before we can sell.
On the homeowners association.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. But we are finishing up and almost sold out of Lakewood Meadows, so we're starting to take names. And so we're, people are looking back there and they're very interested, yes. You know, I'm actually new, I live in Chi La and I help out at the Pittsburgh location, the Victor location, so I'm new to Canada, but from that standpoint, but it's just so much interest, it's been great and it's generally more of, we classify as an empty nester customer, so they're always wanting the ranch. And we have half of our customers coming from different areas, not just on this county, but and then the rest are looking for rightsizing or downsizing, so something comfortable.
I wrote a few questions down, but some of your site plans showed, basically, when is the trail gonna get built? Because in this plan, it shows they're all built, in the next couple of plans, there's nothing. But basically, you have a plan on when the trail will be built.
So the, there's a sizable open space area that's gonna be with section one on the section one plans that has the trail from that parking lot going through it. We will field locate a connection back to the roadway from that. The intent is, and I do believe Jeff doesn't have an issue if this is a condition, to have all the trails built by the end of section two.
Do it. So we, we have suggested condition that all the trails be built prior to issuance of the first C of O of section two, which.
Okay.
That was what's been the last, last C of O.
I may have misspoke.
And may I ask, did that include the parking lots for those trails?
Heck, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And you can be there.
Yes, correct, right?
The, the one along Route twenty-one is part of the section one plant, so that will be built with this section. To, to, to build section two for the fire access, we've got to at least have a stone roadway all the way out to Pretus Street. So that access point will be there and that parking can be there, so I don't see an issue with that.
Okay. In your plan, I think in your landscaping plan, you show typical with four blocks. I asked Jeff this last time I talked to him, if he could just show what they built, the typical two or three plan. You're just showing the four plan. Four blocks.
Yep, and I do believe on these section one plans, we did have the two and the three.
Four and there might be a two.
Wait, we don't, we have plans that show fours?
Yeah.
No, on the landscaping.
It's a typical, typical, yeah, it's in the lower right-hand corners.
Yes.
So, yeah, I've got a two and a three on the landscaping plan.
Good, that'll, yeah, that's a four.
So that one is not the landscaping plan then? So C seven point O is the landscaping plan?
Bottom right corner tells you that.
Yep. Page a little further down. That's just in.
Keep going.
That's the parking lot.
Keep going.
Yeah, it's not at the end, it's.
Yeah, it was on the landscape plan, I can remember if it was a two or three or four.
What was the number again, Rich?
C seven point O. Sheet eleven. All the days I have in hard.
Oh, this one's, this got. It goes from six to nine.
Oh, really? Well, we do have paper.
There it is.
Maybe I touched it.
You probably didn't.
Send old plan, Rich.
Yeah, blame me.
Like an old plan.
Was it seven?
Does that one look like it's got five signatures?
Let's see revision date on, does it have one?
Our issue date on this is eleven eight.
I have eleven nineteen. For the landscape plan. I see it.
Doesn't have a revision, but this one said date issue.
Okay, that's. Yep, that's one you have in the resolution too.
One I read last, eleven nineteen is the issue date on this one, so that, that is the set that came in with Mercy.
Yep, I have to.
This is the set that got issued the week later.
As a result of years.
As a result.
So this is a three-plex, a triplex and two-plex.
Okay, so the FTP site didn't have the latest plans.
Okay.
Okay.
We have the correct updated, fully updated plans.
Yep.
So we just have to reflect in the resolution, the eleven nineteen. Now you, you can't draw your own. All right, good, good catch, bud. What else?
When you do a, when you're gonna do the trail detail, would you deal with the detail in accord to our town park plan? For those put a gap.
So the, the mold trails are generally just mowed.
I think there's a detail in our park plan that he would mark our graph. How wide they can be.
Well, I know that Jeff doesn't wanna go as wide as Miller Park. Which is really wide.
Who's talking, Lakewood Meadows, why? Yeah.
I think, I thought we had a standard.
Okay, we should have a typical section of the trail. Yep. We have one. Okay, do we have a typical section of the trail?
We can add one to the plan.
Okay.
Tom, the park plan is two thousand eighteen, right?
Yeah, I don't wanna see what the width was, because I can't imagine.
So, so keeping in mind that these aren't intended to be built trails, but mowed trails that meet the terrain, so. But we, yes, we're getting the.
Standard.
Which would be, Chris, in the trail easement, that should be a provision as to the width of the trail.
I think you're right.
Where it would come up.
But.
And to the, maybe, obviously, the surface.
But I'd like it on the plan, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No. So that the code, code enforcement can say, you know, this is acceptable or this is not acceptable. And if we have a standard, if we have a standard in our town park plan, it should be that. If we don't, oh, that, is it the Trails Master Plan?
Might be.
Or the Parks and Rec Master Plan?
It kind of both of them.
Yeah, their one was in a amended version of that.
The.
We'll find it.
I, I don't see an issue with adding that if you want to look that into the condition.
It'll also be in our letter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let Lance deal with that.
So we have a trail detail that we were gonna suggest, which I believe we pulled from that as well. I just don't wanna misstate something that's not.
Saying it's in your review letter?
Yes.
Okay, which is a part of the condition.
That we wanted the detail be provided, so we had a minimum width.
Is the board in agreement with the natural trail? I mean, that's one thing we talked about in the preliminary, that is it's gonna be stoned us, is it gonna be natural? I know Ryan had a concern about it, he's not here to to react, but are we okay with the natural?
My opinion is I typically side with Ryan on that issue of having preference for a crushed stone or, or some sort of non-grass surface trail, just in going to Miller Park over this past weekend and how it's been, it's just a and just thinking, I'm walking, it's not really accessible for, for those people that need additional walking devices. I understand that he has this at length and I appreciate the, the discussion topics from the applicants about how they've considered it, but I, I don't think that we can keep rolling decisions over and over again.
I agree with Amanda, because of Tim Ryan, I used to mention in my letter, you're building a parking lot with handicapped spots in it and if that person with handicaps, in my way of their wheelchair, can't go in the grass. So I had Ryan, but maybe just for Jeff, from the letter from the parking lot south of it, for a loop or something, just something that they could do. And that's where mine was on the gravel or so much.
Amanda, are you comfortable with partial gravel or you want all gravel? Like Rob thought, just.
If it's partial, I think it could be better than that.
I know we talked about if there are locations where the natural would not be applicable, that we would require something more, something sturdier. And like, you know, we talked about some of the slopes within over Lakewood Meadows, how they treat the slopes or they put steps in. And so people could walk down steps rather than going down a, you know, which from a safety standpoint, it's better. I, I initially thought it should be some sort of harder surface, but if you're walking Lakewood Meadows and with the possibility that people are gonna walk where they wanna walk, and I think a lot of times, remember the old college days? The kids used to cut across the green, not where the sidewalks were. And I think it, you can through usage, be able to define the alignment where the trail should go, and if you put it in, in a more structured trail, then you lose that flexibility being able to, to move it to some degree.
It's my opinion and and plus that land you're opening up for farming is also great, so that's an other side of the coin where, you know, what, what could the hardscape do to that? Agriculture would use for that farm.
I'd also like to kind of reiterate one of the points that the bill had made and that's the ninety-two thousand dollar park rec fee that Morel has agreed to pay when we were earlier in this process, there was.
Which is required.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, you're donating it, but.
But, but there was a letter from the town manager that was in support of our trails, but it also recommended to this board to, to perhaps in lieu of that park rec fee for the public access of the.
Yeah, I think you got the public access in return for your fifteen percent base incentive increase, yeah. But we got the public.
That park and rec fee can be used to buy the town to incorporate some upgrades to facilities in a lot of town parks that could use them and and focus the money in some areas that, that meet with the town's improvement plan through the parks while maintaining the, the natural environment that, that kind of goes with Miller Park.
I don't think that money can be used for maintenance or up.
Definitely cannot. Can be used for certain types of upgrades.
Yeah, well. What was the sequencing as far as building the trail? With section one, you're gonna build it where, from where, from the.
There's a big section of open space that has a trail in it.
Yep.
We'll lay out in the field a loop around to make that connection back to the end of the section road.
Okay, so you're going around, across the road, across the street. Oh, no, you won't be, because you won't be building that part of it yet. I'm just thinking, maybe we can try the natural trail initially, but then if there's an issue with it in terms of doesn't hold up, doesn't wear, or at some point then in sections two and three, we could consider or request that you go back as part of section. We could consider or request that you go back as part of section two and three and. Reestablished or reconstruct section one trail.
Well, let me, let me look at that. So I would refer everybody to, so. My understanding from the town's position, and I I don't speak for the town, Shawna Shawna does, but I think I could summarize this. The town has a bunch of of. Improved trails, gravel and sidewalks. And in, you know, based on the success of Miller Park, was looking for. More of a natural. Environment. There are places to go, you know, with motion junction. I mean, we're not, the town is obviously. Sensitive to and going, you know, as far as possible to. Provide for, you know, people in wheelchairs and stuff to use our facilities as much as as much as we can. I mean, there's other trails that that do that. And the thought here was that it would sort of mimic Miller Park, the. The town manager's letter. From September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one says, I would respectfully request your conditions of approval, consider conservation easement. That includes HOA maintenance of the natural surface pathways, mowed grass area. With some recourse to the town of Kennedy, which should the HOA not maintain the natural service pathways. I don't think the town wants to get in the business of. You know. Maintaining sidewalks here, and I don't think we want to stick the HOA with the cost of maintaining sidewalks or gravel. It's a lot cheaper to hire. Landscape company to mow the trails, you know, every two weeks than it is to get. To report dump truck loads and a few bobcats and and bulldozers in. Every year or two to resurface gravel trails. That's that's my understanding of it. Obviously, it's the board's decision.
I think that then if we go over the grass.
Yeah, if it doesn't work out. The other, the other thing I was thinking. Unlike a a town park trail that's owned and maintained by the town. And usually is eighty, tries, we try to make it ADA compliant as possible. This is sort of a, it's a quasi-public trail. It's on private property. It's it's more analogous to liquid meadows. In terms of it be mostly used by the residents, but there will, there will be some public people coming over. So that's why I'm thinking that the natural trail and also the flexibility being able to move it if we have to. But with the condition that if it doesn't work out, the 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 natural trail that we put a harder surface on.
Right across.
So it's it's the one right across from section one. So we're going to have to have a condition that says advocate. It's going to be, you know, so. At some point in the near future, you're going to come in with a. Final phase one.
Oh, that's it.
I think we're just simply saying that the 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 planning board reserves the right to modify the. Surface material of the trail as part of their review and approval of final section two.
So I'm trying to figure out a way to make it so that we can make. Phase one's trail part of that theoretically.
Does the town have access?
It's all part of the big conservation easement for the whole property.
The entire entirety, right?
Because we are splitting up the conservation easement by sections. Can it work?
You got to the end of this, we need to figure it out.
All right, Bobby, anything else? Let me take a crack at a couple of things. The frontage out on. State Route twenty-one. I know you're working with Penn, Penn dot, nine dot to. Get approvals and permits for that access.
So so the main access.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the configuration of that. Would it, I think in the case of. Liquid Meadows, section nine, you provided us a sidewalk easement along Middle Cheshire.
Yep.
Could we have a sidewalk easement along twenty-one there? Provided.
I don't see an issue with that.
Okay. I don't think we need sidewalk. And we'll probably ask you for the same thing in section three on parish extension, but.
Let's get them while we.
While we can. We should actually, don't we do that as standard for all new?
Sure.
For property line to property line along twenty-one?
Twenty-one. Okay, the streetscape itself of the the new street, we discussed the width of it. I think Jim Fletcher has been. Has given his blessing to how that's going to be laid out and to the type of curbing and pavement is going to be used. The. The trees, the street trees are going to be behind the sidewalk, right?
Generally speaking, yes.
Yes, okay.
There's lots of issues with what are called street trees now because of all the utilities that are in.
Yep, oh, yeah, I understand. That's why I asked the question.
So it kind of pushes them back into different locations.
But I I think Jeff had said at one time, boy, it'd be sure nice to have the the trees, you know, so they have a canopy over the street.
Yes.
But then you get into the issues. You talked about it being a utility access, and then you also have several lateral issues. Streetlights, what kind of lakes? Is that shown or detailed anywhere on the plans?
No.
Okay.
Because they're the part of the building plant because of law.
Okay, so these are pole lights at the end of each driveway.
So they're just lighting on the building, correct? Yeah, I believe the townhomes just have the lighting on the building. Yeah, there's no post lights.
There's no poles?
Correct. They 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 moved away from those post lights with the townhomes because the shorter front setback, they can just put a light on the building. That's part of the building plants, and they've had a lot of issues with the poles getting hit. Snow removal, and you have such a confined area that we've done the lighting on the on the townhome itself. Same thing in our other townhomes from these two.
What what does the board feel about street lighting?
I thought we had discussed it as it was going to happen during schedule.
Does liquid meadows have? I know they're singles families, but.
At intersections.
I know Fox Ridge does. The section nine has street, no? Okay.
It's gonna be awful, dark driving through there. With the same exact setup, but our our location in Pittsburgh right now in Alpine Ridge is the same thing.
It's like on St. James.
And once again, keeping with some of this low impact theme. Lighting along the streets is is an impact, especially as you did.
That's a good point. Yeah, you don't want to.
We have had issues with liquid meadows.
Okay.
Continuation of that question, as that entrance point on twenty-one, will there be any sort of monument or something saying? The the essence of it reflecting this is this.
There likely will be a monument sign. It's not designed yet, but lately you have even lighting. Oh, we've used solar lights so that they're not, they impact.
So we. Middle Cheshire at the townhouses. I mean, they're nice looking, they're landscaped, and I I don't know if you have to, you get a sign permit from?
Probably should have like some low lighting.
Okay, anything else on the streets that I have conservation? Sidewalks on one side or both sides?
One side.
One side, on the side with the trailers.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Uh, that hammerhead configuration, it's it's more of a dog leg.
That's one of our comments. It has to be updated to meet the state criteria. And we have an dependency, section D of the town approved code that we'll refer over to where you guys can have. So the town has an adopted detail that mimics the.
Oh, yeah, no, it's in the site.
Which is what the town highway superintendent would prefer. So that's one of our comments that we'll see coming. That will include that detail for you.
You're okay with the county sewer district?
Yes.
Okay, you've done this, the flow test and all that, right? And water, public water, are that moratorium that was on for a while, Chris, that's over, right? With the construction of the ta- the tanks?
I believe so.
Okay, so.
Jim did have some questions, but those are conditions of approval as well. I apologize, suggested condition.
Suggest, yeah. So as far as the conservation easement, the land management plan. And the trail easement, Chris is going to work with Jeff and his legal counsel too.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we would be approving the conditional upon Chris and Morrell working out the language. And hopefully taking into consideration the things we talked about tonight regarding the. The ability to change the trail surface if need be. Define the trail width and parameters as far as the cross section, okay? Anybody in the audience like to speak on this application? Thank you for patiently waiting.
Hi, my name is Elise Casey, and we own the property on twenty-one. And I'm just wondering, when is this all going to happen? What is the timeline for all this building to be initiated?
Good question. I will refer to the applicant.
So we're expecting, once, once we get.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear. You can speak up, please.
Once we get the planning board's approval, there there's a signature or a final comment process that we need to work through. I believe Morrell builders are expecting springtime, probably April, May, maybe June for construction to start.
And is this. Different than the other ninety-five acres on Pear Street that's under review? So there's, would there be two building developments going in?
No, this is, this is the same development that we ran for preliminary overhaul. This is the final plans for the first section of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Virtual. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Victorian B and B.
Okay, um, good evening. Couple of questions, and hopefully you can hear me. Someone asked about when they, you expect to start the construction. And in talking to Jeff Morrell, initially, he thought about starting in March, but now we're talking April, May, June. What are the hours? Are there, were there ordinances about the noise? And of course, I'm. Concerned about that and dust and dirt because you're. Directly impacting my business, and so. That's going to be a big concern of ours.
So I think you, I think it will have an impact on your business, but if they're operating with. Not within the allowed hours of operation, or if there's excessive noise. Call the building inspector's office and and file a complaint, and they should address it. I think you also have developed a reputation or relationship with Jeff. If it's something excessive, I think he will address it.
And those hours are.
They're typically seven to seven. And but those hours sometimes, those sometimes those hours get changed depending upon the timeframes.
Well, obviously. You could. Really put me out of business for months doing this. The parking lot next to the trail, how many parking spots are there? Because I can't really tell from.
If I remember correctly, it was seven or eight.
And where the trip, where the trail is on that plan, is that final now for the location?
Yes, as of today.
That, you know, I've I've had discussions with Jeff, so I know the had the other information I need, but. I can take the rest personally with him, so more other questions. So that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
We could answer in regards to the road, that's a, once we put the road in. That takes usually three to four months, tops. And once we have the section one road in, that's going to create dust and noise, but once we move on to just building the townhomes. I don't think you'll have as much impact, and when we move into future sections, I think it'll, you'll be insulated from that. They're farther enough away where I don't think you'll have the impact that this first section is going to have.
Yeah, except you're doing the, putting a road in at the height of my business is when you're starting, so. I mean, our our busy season is June to beginning of November, so. You take that three to four months out, that's might the entire summer. They're putting in, are they putting in the road all at one time? So for all sections?
No, we put in just section one. We receive, we're going for final on just section one.
So it takes you three to four months to put a road in for one section?
Yeah, it just depends on weather and and availability, but once they get started, we just put Alpine Ridge in. And the section is similar to this size. And we were able to finish that up in about two, two and a half months. So I'm just trying to be conservative because it's the first section, and that was an extension. And Jeff does want to start as soon as possible, so I think Rich is being just budgeting more time, but. We, our goal is to get started because we're liquidated, and we don't have any product left at Lake.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else from the virtual world? Okay, I think we're. The point you can. Look at some sort of, I will close the public hearing. And we'll start our deliberations. Is the board okay with what we discussed tonight, assuming Lance will go over the conditions prior to our voting on them, on them? Just seeing if there's anything else. Okay. Okay.
What was the width? I'm sorry, Mr. Forty-six?
Forty-six for light use, one-way traffic, and then seven to ten for heavy use.
So what does the board defer? Yeah, just decide. What's Miller Park? I mean, what's?
I know that.
Ten foot is the Auburn Trail width that extends, you know, that you see a lot of it.
Ten is wide for.
Six is like your sidewalk width.
Yeah. Lakewood Meadows trails are very barely narrow.
Four.
I would say.
You comfortable at seven? You guys comfortable at seven? Hey, Bob says eight, you guys good? I was thinking eight, too, but then I chickened out. Hey, Lance, we've all agreed, eight.
Okay. Double run with a mower. I should comment, the ECB did a thorough review of these plans and that. And, uh, Kim got us the minutes from the meeting. Is there any issues in there? I think a lot of them were discussed here tonight. But they have, I don't have.
Oh, their question was the distance from the stream to the trail.
So we don't have a specified distance on the plan. All, all the grass trails are laid out in the field that could be coordinated with the town.
If we get into a wet section, you can move it, but those, uh, those little bridges you're building, are, are they similar to what you have at Lakewood Meadows? They, they look like a wood structure.
Yeah, they'll be doing the same thing.
Well, you also have, uh, gateway entrances, uh, to the trails, uh, which is a very nice touch of Lakewood Meadows. Uh, they, when you enter to the trail, it's got a sort of a wood structure and it's got a sign, uh, defining the trail. You understand what I'm talking about, Bill?
Sure.
That should be something that's included in the, uh, the easement agreement.
Yeah, and I haven't won the comments that are like that the trail have sign locations and various points to identify where you are.
Sign and entrance improvements.
I know that Mr. Merle wanted to also reference the Miller, in the Miller Park sign, references, maybe upgrade it so it shows all of the trail network, including Miller Park, including Pierce Brook.
And then I believe he was additionally up the signs on our side.
Your side, absolutely.
So they, they be kind of.
With continuity of what's in Miller to what's in Pierce Brook.
There were benches, I think you had, you were going to put some benches. I knew Jeff talked about, he showed us pictures of other trails and he says you'd have benches.
Once again, those are generally field located.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know he's, he's talked about it being a platform up at the, the pond, wetland area. And tho- those are really the, finding the right spot to put one of those in.
We also talked about looping the, around the stormwater management pond eventually, once you know, people start walking, um, to kind of create.
On the plan now?
We may want to. Continue, the trail ends at the stormwater management pond, but it's for continuity and to create that, you know, runners loop, walkers loop to, to continue that up and around, back to the sidewalk. Or actually not back to the sidewalk, back to the trail.
Okay, so the, you got that, Lances?
No, I don't have that.
Like condition eighty-five.
A big chunk of that would be the, the access pathway for the.
Right, for maintenance.
So some of that will kind of always be that.
Right, right.
We have a comment on the pond access, uh, which has its own minimum requirements associated with it.
I think at Lakewood Meadows, the association did it. They, they, they ran the trail around the, that pond down there. It's a nice feature. And you have your HOA documents to file, so you have that to go through. This is a de minimis HOA? I mean, this is different than Lakewood Meadows. Oh, you know.
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, but I, I think it, I think we got into a discussion with Lakewood Meadows that people abandoned, they abandoned trails, trails just went away, they got overgrown. How do we assure that here? And it's a different type of structure where in Lakewood Meadows, the people own the lots. Here it's, it's, uh, sort of like a condominium.
Yeah, this is a.
More condo.
Yeah, this is all in an HOA.
So it's a more structured HOA.
Yeah, where Lakewood has two HOAs. There's one.
Yeah, for section nine and one for the single.
So with the structure of Pierce Brooks HOA, the review process takes longer with the state, correct? Because it's so detailed?
Yes.
Okay. And then who approves that?
I do first and then.
Right, and then it goes to the attorney general. Okay, got it.
And there's lawyers who specialize in that.
Okay, so the hearing has been closed. Uh, I think we've talked about the details and I, it was good discussion because I think with, at the preliminary stage, we said that a lot of these, uh, minutia things would be discussed at the final plan stage. I think we've certainly talked about that enough that, uh, I think we're ready to move on. Someone, uh, want to make, and we, secret's been taken care of, so we, uh, with the preliminary. So we're only looking at a, uh, final section one subdivision plan. So, uh, I will make a motion that we, uh, approve the plan. Uh, a revised plan that was dated, uh, November nineteenth. That was the latest revision, so we're, make sure we're getting everything was covered, including the landscaping around the, uh, around the units. And, uh, subject to, uh.
Nineteen.
Nineteen conditions.
Not bad.
That's good.
Don't we get in details? Uh, okay, we're, we've.
Do you like me to read?
We looked at fourteen of them. Oh, that, uh, that thing with the ZBA that you've got to get your ZBA approval next week, right? So you can get the lot line adjustment.
For the two double front edge.
I think you've got a.
You got a condition. I saw the condition.
Do you want me to read through them before you get a second? It's true.
Yeah.
Whatever the board would like.
Yeah, just read the new ones.
Okay, good. The new ones. Fifteen, which is after the administrative lot line condition. Uh, number fifteen says the conservation and trail easement and maintenance agreement, including the ability of the town to, uh, including ability for the town of Canada, excuse me, ability of the town.
To charge back the developer and or HOA if trails and conservation areas are not adequately maintained are to be provided to the, uh, planning board attorney for approval and such approval shall be obtained prior to the planning board chairman's signature being a fix to the final section one subdivision plans. The easements shall be filed at the Ontario County Clerk's office and files easements are to be submitted to the town clerk within five days of them being filed. Failure to file such easements shall invalidate this approval.
Do that. Wow, okay. Sixteen, the planning board reserves the right to modify the surface of the trails of the entire trail network as part of their review and approval of future section two plans.
Of any future.
Not just two.
Just two?
Not just two.
Well, you want, you want the ability as far.
For section one, we want to be able to do it at section two.
Oh, right, because we're just, yeah, that makes.
I'm, yeah, I'm intending to make it as part of your next review. Okay.
Why don't you include the alignment and surface?
Okay. Modify the alignment. And surface of the trail network as part of their review and approval of section two plans. Section two, final section two.
Now, our, our discussion was based upon feedback of users of the trail.
I believe the board will have a public hearing as part of that process and so will.
Yeah, if, uh, we come to section two and everybody's happy with the way it is.
I just want to make sure Jeff's covered that it's not just a wide open.
Understood. Right, number seventeen. The, the final subdivision plans are to show a sidewalk easement along Route twenty-one extending from, uh, property line to property line.
Furniture.
And the width of that easement, we typically get a ten-foot, uh, ten-foot wide sidewalk easement. Um, I think that should be sufficient in that area. I don't want to. We've enlarged it in certain locations, but.
Not here.
Not, I, I don't, I think the right away of Route twenty-one is going to be wide enough where they can accommodate.
Well, you're going to have a five-foot sidewalk, so that would give you a five-foot curist. Okay.
You can make it wider for the board of light. I'm just saying.
Make it fifty.
We can go.
I was just thinking of what we did on.
Being a state highway. Maybe on, on. Parish extension could be ten.
Number eighteen. The subdivision plans are to be revised to provide a detail of the trail with a minimum width of eight foot, showing a minimum width of eight foot. I can extend on that, but it's. And then number nineteen, subdivision plans have been revised to extend the trail network around stormwater management facility located within section one.
And then number, what?
Twenty?
No, going to the existing ones. Number eight has been revised to take out.
To date of the letter.
The date of the engineer's letter so that they're just responsible to satisfy the engineer, not any pre-existing list.
Yeah, and then number five was modified to state prior to the last C of O. So it basically states number five. And those will be added to the final section one subdivision plan stating that the entire trail network and parking lots as shown on the plans is to be completed by, by the developer as part of section two prior to the last C of O.
Okay. Anything else? Welcome back. We are delivering on the final section one subdivision plan for.
I will be abstaining from this, so.
Okay, since you weren't part of the deliberation. Best, uh, appreciate your volunteering to do that. Uh, okay, uh, we have a motion made by me, and I need a second, subject to those.
I'll just make a second.
Conditions. Okay, got a motion and a second. Make further discussion. All in favor? I, post. Okay, Carlos, thank you.
One abstention, John?
Thank you.
Love that. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, we're back to the more mundane things. Well, let's do the minutes, hers from November twenty-third. Have a motion. Okay. Second, uh, two drafts. Thank you very much, John. Did a nice job as usual. All in favor? I, post. Uh, no referrals from town board. You were going to get us hard copies of the comp plan at some point, Shauna, right?
They are at the printer.
They're at the printer. Okay, very good. Thanks for, thanks for offering to.
Yes.
Get them for us. ZBA, no recommendations to them. Nothing from Chris Jensen. No alerts of credit release. Let's talk two extensions, one for Mr. Metro's. His property over on, uh, Bristol Road. Is that project going to happen or?
I haven't heard a word.
Kim, I think, I think Brennan said the last time it was just, he was finishing another project and he was going to move on to this one next and that was, that was ninety days ago, so.
Well, I know that we issued comments a while ago. I thought we issued an approval and I don't recall, but I don't think we signed the plans yet, but we issued an approval letter regarding the revised plans that were submitted. I want to say a month ago, maybe. Um, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure I remember doing that initially. And then it's more favorable for it, which then technically would allow them to move on to the next step, which would be signatures.
Yeah, but they don't have. They don't have the conservation easement yet.
In the back, is that where that is?
I forget, but I was supposed to write it.
Right, I believe there might be.
Yeah, oh, so I haven't done that, so they're entitled.
Let's do this. Let's give him a second ninety day, but make this a final. This is his final notice. Excuse me?
Two ninety days of sanctions are essentially the, this is the last.
Well, I just want to make sure that he knows it, okay?
We'll put an emphasis on the second.
Uh, you can say final, the second and final. And that's something that reminds me that in our rules and regulations, we should consider extensions, two, two extensions as part of our tools. Okay, I got a motion. I will make that. Second for the extension. Okay, all in favor? I, okay, then moving on to Aura Power, the solar folks over in County Route ten. Are they having issues with the?
Conditions.
Their party.
They're just working on meeting their conditions. They just need a little more time.
So like solar projects in general, they're trying to seek funding. They also have to get all the conditions, which are pretty substantial. Decommissioning estimate, all that surety, um, MRB group did issue a comment letter, I want to say maybe a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago. On that final submittal, which still has some comments left to be addressed. Um, so as soon as we get those plans in, we can review them and approve them, but ultimately they won't, I think some of those conditions don't necessarily prevent them from getting the signatures. Most of those conditions prevent them from getting building permits until those items have been submitted.
Well, this is their first, uh, we'll give, I, I recommend to the board, we, uh, give it to them. Do I have a motion that affects?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ryan made a motion. I have a second. And a second and further discussion, all in favor? Okay, uh, we're getting there, guys. You, uh, want to spend some time on the rules and regulations now, or you just want to, uh, do it at our reword meeting in January? I know, but Bob is poured up. No, I, I think that's the most comments we've had in our.
I love Bob's comments.
Yeah. They were very good.
I don't have them with me.
Our, our January, we love the, the bad as far.
We have only two and, uh, Frontenac may not be back, so.
All right.
And Finger Leaks Radio may not either, so we might have a lot of time.
And you don't get to cancel it if there's no applications because you need to have an order meeting.
That's right. So we got to meet, so let's.
Unless you can change the rules.
It would be helpful to have comments from the board before the eleven, so we could compile them in a draft.
I will defer to Chuck.
What's for his comments or whether?
Yeah, so that double the amount of comments due by Chuck that. Chuck gets bold letters. Yeah, no, I, you know, I mean, like, this is since Skype, I think it's two thousand fourteen, like, I believe. I mean, like, I read your comments and that's cool, too. Like, I'm, I'm cool with it all, you know what I mean?
Okay, well.
Six o'clock is a little early sometimes, but I come in here with some Wendy's french fries and it works out, you know? I've always, I always advocate, just so everyone knows, I always advocate that the board.
I enjoy that.
Buy us dinner every second Tuesday. We, there is a food budget.
I think that's a great idea.
We used to do it in.
Let's put it in the rules and regs.
There's a food budget? I don't think that's true there, buddy.
It doesn't say food. It says budget.
Don't say it many times. We, we used to, we used to.
Dog, did you hear that?
To give us food, uh, before meetings because you never want.
To give us food uh before meetings because you never want people to be hungry. Yeah, or rushing to get to dinner.
Right.
Yeah, so and it's just something, but I know that we probably won't move in that direction, but I always say it's like pastime.
How about wine and cheese?
Uh yes.
Okay, I mean, yeah.
MRB said they'll provide dinner for us.
All right, well, why don't we deliberate over the rules and regs uh in the coming. In the coming month and uh. If you have additional comments, Bob, get them to.
I know PRC.
Anybody else?
The PRC committee had a couple of comments regarding that as well.
As far as schedule.
Schedule, and when we put what on each agenda? Yes, right.
Now, my question is gonna be with, since you bring up the PRC, though. Did our our rules of procedure do not necessarily influence the PRC meetings, right?
No. Okay. Our PRC meetings could influence the board meetings, though.
Right, that's.
Yeah, right.
First time.
I mean, you have, the the town is, and I apologize, Shawna, the town is moving forward with a new policy in terms of when applications are due. Which gives the town staff more time to do a review so that our PRC meetings cover more air, because we have, there's a lot of applications coming in. So the PRC really is intended to really provide a good thorough overview of the project so that when they ultimately get placed onto an agenda. You have everything that is needed for the package to potentially move forward, and that's the intent, where you get to have. Up-to-date package, correct, and and the town uses those PRC meetings to do that. Um of which, sometimes with those PRC meetings, the way it's currently set up, which we've been. Mon- we've been modifying during the review up until recently when we were corrected of that, which is. Your policy currently is, is everything that's that with the PRC, new applications go to your second meeting. Carryovers go to your first meeting. That's how it was being done, we we made some modifications at PRC because certain agendas were getting overloaded with twelve to eleven, you know, different applications. And the easier or the lighter ones went to the first one. Basically, what we're looking to do is possibly modify that so that the PRC has the ability, if an application is, and bear with me, this is just. Talking of the cup, single-family residential, doesn't require county referral, there's no substantial review other than the planning board associated with it that that could expedite it. Up to you guys.
Let's please do that.
Push those to that first meeting, assuming they get whatever the PRC requires of them, and those will be placed on the first one besides carryovers. And the larger, more, you know, convoluted processes go to the second meeting.
Well, and I think, yeah, and I think the PRC should be, and Shawna personally should be sort of empowered to balance the. The agendas each month. You know, okay, you're on the first one, you're on the second one, based on who's got complete applications and who doesn't?
Absolutely.
And Chuck could override.
Yes, Chairperson should always.
Chuck will give him a hammer.
Right, because Chuck is at the meeting and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, right, right, right. And currently, we don't have that ability, we were doing that, but we didn't necessarily have that ability.
I guess, I guess part of my concerns are that we, years ago, Chuck, remember, we were talking, we were talking about the PRC? And like, like, who sets those rules of procedure?
For the PRC?
The PRC?
Yeah.
They 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 were established before I came.
Right.
Came in.
Uh I'm trying to think how, I know.
It was a, the meeting occurred on the third Monday of every month.
Consisting of X people, but it's essentially open to whomever wants to go.
I think the PRC is a creature of the planning board.
Yeah.
Created by the planning board's rules of procedure.
It is.
I think, I don't know what else.
That's what my question.
It's not in here, I don't think.
So, I, all right, so I could tell you that I don't know when it was created, but I know. The Director of Development for Farmington, while he was here working with Canada, started doing PRC meetings, and whether they were going on before him, I don't know that to be true or false. But I know that we do them again, they will, we do them here, there's a lot of municipalities they have since started doing them, so I don't know where it's specifically written into it. But I know our site design criteria has a suggestion about when we have a PRC meeting and who's included in the PRC meeting. I know that applications now have some requirements associated with that, so it's kind of snowballed into more, but. I think it's an opportunity for the board, maybe there is something that we can look at that.
That's, and that's what I'm wanting, like Chuck, you you're closer to that than we are. So, you know, I wondered, you know, like, if there's, if there's room for improvement there, you know, maybe this is.
I think there are requirements.
You know, if you say that there's even from from the applicant's side or from the town's side or from the planning board's side, like, you kind of see all those sides, so. If you can see some efficiencies that could be made there, maybe that goes, I don't know if that goes in our rules, that's, that's, that was.
No, it's not.
Questions.
So that, it saves us a lot of time in our meetings.
Exactly.
There's a lot of filtering that's done at PRC in terms of making sure. Uh this complete application, that we're not getting an application that's missing a lot of information and why spend time here at a meeting saying you don't have this, you don't have that. You know, and send them on their way and waste their time and our time, so it it serves that purpose, because we do meet with the applicant or his engineer.
Right.
At PRC and we uh send him back with a shopping list of things he's gotta do, and then he's got a deadline to bring those plans back revised, and if he doesn't, then. He gets pushed to the next agenda the next month, so.
Yeah, so there's, there's two typical kinds, types of meetings that I'm aware of, there's your pre-application meetings that as the applicant says, hey, I have an idea, I wanna meet with staff. And they set up a meeting and meet, PRC is intended for an actual application that's been delivered to the town. And the town has to do some subsequent review before it comes to you guys, and that's what the PRC's was created for, was to assist staff with doing that pre-up that that meet, that review. Of the applications to make the determination whether or not it was a complete application or not. And now we have checklists that govern that process.
And we see those checklists, I mean, Michelle.
You guys exactly.
I mean, we look at those, you know, the writings and boxes are checked and.
But my intent. In shifting the deadline for planning board a week sooner, so it's gonna be the basically the first of the month now versus.
It used to be the Friday, the Friday before, you know, the Friday before our PRC meeting, then we moved it to Wednesday, and now it's.
Yeah, now it's the following, whenever that first date, you know, that we're have business hours. That will give me time to to actually sit down, look at the application, because there isn't enough time when it comes in. On a Friday or even a Wednesday to turn it around, I want time to do my zoning law determinations, which I'm doing now um. Before PRC, because it's, it, everybody gets more out of it.
Mind you, during.
No, they're done after now, and they.
No, that's irrelevant, that's useless.
Right, it 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 just.
Yeah.
But having them done before the PRC meeting helps identify what needs variance is.
Absolutely.
Where applications are going and get some of that detail that we don't necessarily get without. You know, there, sometimes we have seven or eight applicants sitting in the hall waiting to come in.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of referring to, has been an issue for several years. Like, we've, we've been hearing about this, going back to Tom Shore, that there's a line of people outside and they don't know why they're there, so I mean.
If there's a way to do.
Yeah, and then they get to the meeting and then it's not productive. So it seems like if we can make efficiencies on both sides, all three sides, especially the applicants. Let's make it, I mean, we don't need to make process towards, we don't want people to come into the town hall, I would assume, my opinion is that they don't come into town hall waiting in line to get down. Oh, geebers, I left the certified checks someplace, I I don't know, I have to go, yeah, you know, I mean, like, let's get that ahead of time, so that's gonna help, like, let's make those improvements.
Definitely, I think one thing that's that's helped is technology, we did a lot of it zooms, a lot of the applicants will zoom. And now, so if they're waiting, they're waiting wherever they are.
So Shawna, Chuck and Lance, you guys are working to improve the process.
Oh, absolutely.
As part of those improvements, I was just gonna say, I think the PRC is, at least most of the deadlines and time restrictions on PRC. Are in the planning board's um. Rules of procedure. But we'll have to address, you'll have to amend those.
And our calendar.
Yeah, and on the calendar, which the calendar has effect because of it's approved by the planning board.
And we also just FYI, we're much more strict now about kicking out.
Play for the bills. Thank you.
We're not gonna chase people.
And actually, can I see that again?
I mean, that's just, there's no time for that.
Ryan, I think it's like a little ground bugs day here, because I think we had this exact same conversation. Last year. Uh unless otherwise directed by the planning board chair, if the zoning officer or duly appointed representative determines that the application is deficient. And not ready for placement on a planning board agenda correspondence outlining the specific deficiencies. Will be sent to the applicant and it will be placed on the agenda, but it already says, unless otherwise directed by Chairman Chuck Euler. Probably made me put that in last year.
Well, it's just a philosophy.
Oh, no, it makes sense.
Okay, so we'll uh come prepared on the eleventh. To talk about the rules and regs, which will be part of uh our reorganization as well as the adopting the calendar, reappointing. Our consultants. Uh all right, so January eleventh, as we said, Funak may or may not be back.
Funak has counsel now.
Why they called me Jerry Golden?
Jerry Golden.
That's a bro. From what's over here.
So, stay tuned.
Okay. And Finger Lakes Radio, uh that's the one where we decided we weren't going to take any action until the violations were taken care of and the. It's it's a situation where he needs the building to solve the violation, so, you know, which comes first, uh so I I think Chris is working on.
Well, I am asking Brennan to consult with Keith, the owner. And address the, all of our outstanding violations and how he's going to ameliorate those with the new building.
Right, thought is if they give us some kind of a a law, that might facilitate you guys moving forward.
That way you're not kind of stuck in between.
Okay, so that's the eleventh, and then the twenty-fifth of January, we've got maybe Corey Westbrook, depending how he does the ZBA. That the week before, and uh Mr. Parsons had requested he be extended to twenty-fifth, so. Anything else come out of PRC the other day?
Just all the February applications.
All of February, okay. All right, anything else? Fellas, did we scare you off? Uh yet, huh, you're still here?
It's more interesting, too, when you can see sort of that some of the documents. More interesting. You've been here too long to say you don't think this is awesome.
Ryan makes it interesting.
He does.
Yeah, sure. All right, uh and we do have a policy here that a certain individual makes a motion to adjourn, so for the last time in two thousand twenty-one.
I'll gladly make the motion to adjourn this meeting, and wish everybody a very special, happy holidays, happy New Year, and eight oh one PM.
I second it. Okay, Amanda seconds, all in favor? Aye, post. Okay. Thanks, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys, so much.